Oh, building. So we heard them.
Good morning. Okay. Good luck. Good to know you. All right. Here's one of the shared posts. Go on, prepare.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. It is approximately five thirty-five. I call this meeting to order. This is the Building Committee and Finance and Audit Committee meeting. Today is Monday, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Getting to agenda item number two, which is roll call. For the Building Committee members, we have Mr. Andres Montoya Junior.
True.
Will be the September.
Present.
Orca de Gallo, present, and Mr. Semen, I'm here, is absent. With regards to the Finance and Audit Committee members, Jorge de Gallo, present, Esteban, I'm here, absent. Carolina Liso, absent. Miss Tita Cantubella should be on her way, but for record purposes, absent. All right, moving on to agenda item number three, construction update. Mr. Orlando Sabelo and Mr. Cumeira Weiss.
Ah, Orlando Sabelo, Director of Plan Operations Management for the Record. Just to identify the project that we've got going or we had going, we're at the Chapel Flood Damage Repairs, the P fourteen building, Imaginarium, Sub Texas Movement, P twenty-four building remodeling, re- Texas Department of Public Safety movement, Phase One for McIntosh Paving Project, W G Plumbing Repairs, HVAC, MFA HVAC System Overhaul and Consolidation of the Chiller Plant with the VPA, LEAC, HVAC Chiller Plant.
Just for the record, Mr. Miss Cantubella is present.
The, uh, unfortunately now that the chapel was in strong damage, the system had been completely repaired, replaced, redesigned, and now walls repaired, painted, complete, hardware, floor and repair standing is staying complete. Chapel is moving, moving, moving in ready. Might maybe other changes to it, but for now, it's the way it was, is intact.
Good.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Uh, P fourteen year old ward hospital restoration. Um, this, as you all know, building for leasing through the Imaginarium. Uh, the cost was seven hundred sixty-five thousand, one forty-sixth. Uh, I think it came out of a dress with line decker. Project construction already about eighty-five percent complete. The, the one had, the what's hanging up, the completion is the, the elevator. Uh, we, we, we estimate that as soon as the elevator is estimated to be here sometime in April. Line Decker can't give me an exact date, but, uh, uh, we're doing everything to get it ready, to get the building ready, pending the installation of the, of, of the elevator cabin. Um, the Imaginarium has already moved forward and, and, and re-negotiated with them all till September first. I don't think they, we're gonna need that much, but, uh, they did, went ahead and did it anyway. As you can see, some of the work, uh, some of the flooring, all of the install, the ceiling, the HVAC. So we're, we're just quite a, quite a lot of work already done in our building. Uh, P twenty-four art building remodeling, remodeling building to house the Department of Public Safety Regional Office, cost of two hundred twenty-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-three. Sir Tuche was the contractor. Uh, their work is a hundred percent complete. Uh, anything that's remaining more on the connectivity for the building is, is a responsibility of the Department of Public Safety. There, uh, we're, we're coordinating whatever they need, but as far as the actual construction work on the building is complete. Uh, predict the moving day, the PS, the EBS would advise to coordinate a grand opening, so we don't know exactly what it's gonna entail, what they need to do, there's a lot of security stuff that they gotta do, but I just saw the building here last week and it's, it's beautiful, it's the way it's come up, it's, uh, like, we, we added a new, a new bathroom in the back and, uh, finally, we're doing something with the basement, that's where they have the ID, their evidence room, and, uh, so all that looks
Wow.
doesn't look like a hundred and thirty-five year old building. It's all very modern.
Okay.
Uh, the McIntosh Paving Project. We repair, seal coat, re-strive, uh, four McIntosh streets and seven parking lots. Uh, this is supposedly Phase One, Phase Two will be, uh, doing the, the streets and parking lots in the south. Phase One costs seven hundred and thirty-five thousand for, for McIntosh only. The status is a sixty-eight percent complete for American Contractors. There are two lots left to do. Uh, estimated best completion scenario will be March twenty-three, subject to materials availability and weather. And you can see the, the lot, the, the two lots that are still pending is Lot O, which is in a corner, down in the corner on the map, and, uh, put up in front of Allied Health Building, and the other one is Lot C behind the Memorial Building. All the rest of the lots are pretty much complete and re-strived. And, uh, whether permitting, hopefully we can meet the deadline that we set up with the completion date that we have established.
When is that date?
Uh?
When is that deadline?
March.
March? Sometime in March.
Well, the south was still gonna wait until construction is over with, right?
Yeah.
The South Campus?
Yes. And yeah, yeah, we're gonna wait for that till till we establish which, which parking lots need, need, and, uh, so because we don't want big trucks to, you know, drag yourself around and, and, and destroy the, the work. Uh, my dear Jim and Larry Hall, woman repairs project, the, the project is a complete replacement of it. Jim's plumbing infrastructure, can hold sinks, fixture, lavatory, water lines, two lavatories that need it, drains, modern PVC and cleanouts. Uh, it costs us seventy-three thousand, I expect to see that project is complete. Now, the big one, the MFA HVAC System Overhaul and Consolidation with the MFA, VPA, LEAC HVAC Systems in one chiller plant. It's, uh, it's a project executed by Crane. Uh, project got on the way, uh, six point nine million dollars. Project got on the way mid-December, running on utilities, show water piping. And if they were saying is now is group, is stage now, we just finished replacing all the twenty variable air volume boxes. And, uh, and just now working on getting the ceiling and all the, all the controls back and, 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 and that, that work. The, the, the project is scheduled for completion at the end of January twenty-four. It's, uh, it's, uh, it's a fairly rigorous project. We've got, uh, um, a complete overhaul of the, of the buildings, uh, uh, variable, B A B boxes, there are twenty of them, like I said, and, uh, six chillers. Uh, sort of, well, air handlers, sorry, and plus three new chillers that will be added to the, to the, uh, mechanical room that, that services the VPA and the LEAC. And, uh, and then a complete, uh, uh, tie-in of all of those three systems, which I had previously said. Those three buildings comprise about thirty-seven percent of the square footage of this campus, and they're not, uh, as efficient as you, as, as we have the rest of the campus with, uh, with this, with a, uh, chiller tank, which the way we use it has saved us an immense amount of, uh, electricity. We're hoping that once we get this, this project finished, that we can work on the next idea of Phase Two is to add a, a second thermal tank to the campus.
Sure.
Who, who is the contractor in this particular project?
Train.
Train?
Train. When, when they have subs, uh, you know, there's various subs that are working on the train, but Train is the one responsible for all the work that gets getting done.
Good.
Yeah, and, um, so far, they've, they've kind of stuck to the schedule we got. Uh, the challenge that I was talking to the sense that will be when they replace the six air handlers in the building, which basically they're the ones that blow the air, uh, all around, so we'll have, we're gonna have to work on our advanced scheduling. And, uh, currently, um, Train is working on a zone, what air handler is effectively zoned in the building, so that we can have a, an idea of what air handler we're gonna be replacing at a certain time and what it, what zone it affects. And, um, then, uh, the replacement of the chiller is not gonna be a big deal because we're gonna pre-build everything and then tie it in at the end, we'll be parlaying that or a couple of days to, to get the, the whole new system in place.
I, I was gonna ask you about that, uh, and I appreciate you bringing it up because of, of individual section within buildings.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and it, uh, basically, sometimes it has to be properly having monitored or, or reassigned uh, and, and based, based on your observation or your comments.
Right, so, so we're working on a map that says, okay, air handler one, two, three, four, five, six, which zones it affects? Well, because we gotta disconnect it and put a new one in and, and, and and all, all air handlers at that building are the same. There are, some are smaller than others, there's some more complicated to replace, uh, so, uh, we're, uh, we're working on that and, and we'll get some feedback as to the scheduling, how we're gonna shut these things down and hopefully not impact the buildings a lot, so. Um, like I've said this several times, I kept keeping my fingers crossed that the whole system didn't crash altogether and we were out completely. So just hope that doesn't happen. Some pictures, uh, the, the top three pictures are what, uh, what a B A B boss looks like, that's one that diverse air to the various different zones. And then, of course, uh, we're running the chiller lines all the way from the, the, uh, chiller plant for the other two buildings into this building, and so all that work is, uh, is happening right now. That, that's it. They're out. Russ, any questions?
A lot of work.
Uh-huh.
A lot of work. It's those old buildings, they look really nice.
Yeah.
Like Imaginarium, wow.
This, this is, uh, kind of our, our day-to-day stuff, it's like.
This HVAC, I, I will do. Who have problems at the south that have problems, but so that's a big, that's a.
It's very hard to keep a camera flying.
Yeah.
But, uh, I, 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 we have a, we have a very good, I don't like to toot our horn, but we have very good physical plant staff at, uh, group electrician, operators, mechanics, everything, so.
Congratulations.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on to agenda item number four, approval of Lamar Brumby that I got at Environmental Center, Science Center, G Max, uh, we are going to defer that item for the next meeting.
Uh, Mr. Shun, we, we do have one more item on the updates.
Sorry. Okay. This thing, right?
This is being deferred.
No, no, we're, we're.
Okay, good evening. Cumeira Weiss with the record, construction project manager for our college. Uh, we're bringing you an update, uh, today, uh, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, I'm gonna briefly go through, uh, some projects that we have, some that have been completed, and we're going to go ahead and remove from our presentations, uh, because they are a hundred percent completed, uh, as of today. A list of the, uh, the projects that, uh, that we have. Okay, sorry. This is the project of the South Campus, uh, we have the, uh, flat roof socket LED improvements, the standing team metal roof, uh, bell tower restoration and improvements, the CDL pad, uh, the diesel auto collision shop expansion, uh, protective service facility renovations and restoration addition, and Building C, uh, second floor instructional room and office renovations. At Ford Mac, we currently have the Rubengatia facility rooftop gutter renovations and interior upgrades, the Lamar Benimadgada environmental renovation and addition project, and, uh, currently now onboard that we have an additional project at the I D S G of Facility Renovations. I'll briefly go through, uh, each of them. The, uh, the software LED improvements to the South Campus have been a hundred fifty percent completed. Couple of the photographs that we've, uh, brought to you before, uh, that project is now completed a hundred percent, it will be, uh, removed from our list of projects. Another one is the, uh, South Campus Flat Roof Improvements, that one is also a hundred percent completed. We did do some, uh, bell tower, uh, improvements to the South Campus. Couple of pictures showing the, uh, the new rooftop and also the, uh, the enclosure, uh, to the well, uh, that, uh, operates right above the, the elevator shaft, and we have that, uh, covered up as well, uh, to, um, get rid of the, uh, water leakage that we had on, on that bell tower. That work has been a hundred percent, uh, completed as well. The CDL driving pad project, uh, by Landmark Construction, and the C Mar project has been completed a hundred percent. We do have few items, uh, punch lists that I addressed to the architect and to the contractor this past week, uh, and they'll be attending to them. Uh, it is available for operation now. Uh, they haven't physically moved on to it, but, uh, it, the, it is, it is, uh, able to go under operation, uh, now.
Mr. Turn. May, for that particular project, we're gonna need to set aside a date for a ribbon cutting ceremony, uh, so that we can, uh, once we approve the, the nameplate and all of that, but we will have to schedule something for, for a grand opening of, of the addition.
All right.
Sure.
It would be good, uh, uh, for, for the college and, and, and of course to have the representation of, of the, of the, uh, trucking organization. Because as you probably are very much aware, uh, our truck is, uh, we are averaging, uh, the number of crosses that through the bridge, we're looking at sixteen to seventeen thousand, eighteen, eighteen waders on a daily basis.
Right.
So that's, that's an incredible number, and, uh, it'd be great for the key people of, of the, the, the trucking industry to have as much awareness and knowledge that the college is actually, uh, doing everything in order to help them out by, by training the drivers that eventually will hopefully end up, uh, being hired by them.
And our intent is, as soon as we have a date, um, we will go ahead and start to notify through, um, both the, the organizations through Luiz Bacca and through Alpha, uh, that, that both are housed here on our campus, we can start to get the word out to them and then through the three PLs. Um, so we, we have some internal contacts with, with some of those people, and so there will be a, a a general invite to that, and hopefully we can start to also generate some scholarship money out of some of our partners in, in that community, so.
Be great.
Um, so yes, that is our intent.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving now forward with the, uh, diesel and auto collision shop at the expanding project in South Campus. Couple of photographs of some ongoing work, uh, currently the actual physical demolition of the project has been a hundred percent completed, and utility relocations and subgrating improvements are in progress right now. A couple of photographs showing some of the progress work on, on the site. Additional photographs. We also have, uh, some, uh, additional projects, uh, the South Campus Protective Service Facility renovation and the improvements to Building C. Uh, that work is currently, uh, with Cabasal Architects here in Rado. Plans have, uh, been completed along with specs, and the package has been turned into line decker, and they will be working on a, uh, GMP, uh, to go ahead and bring us a number here probably in the next thirty days. This is the, uh, Ford Mac, uh, facility improvement project, the Rubengatia facility rooftop gutter and interior renovations were commenced on-site on January sixteenth, uh, this year, twenty twenty-three. Some photographs of some existing conditions, uh, on, on that rooftop, uh, some of the major, uh, leaks on that building, uh, uh, that happened, uh, in the photograph kind of shows you the, uh, passwork that has been done and, and, uh, just the aging of the roof, uh, so all of this gutter will be completely, uh, removed and, and upgraded and, and lined with a new lining, uh, that will also come with a, with a warranty behind it. Uh, so that work is, is ongoing right now. They are currently also replacing all those screws on the metal, uh, uh, panels along the perimeter of the building, and also doing some, uh, screw, uh, fastening replacement on the roof as well. Uh, walking on the, on the surface, uh, and the interior section, which is, is, is walkable. Uh, we found out that a lot of the metal panels had missing screws, uh, and, and were just up there, uh, if we were to probably get hit by a good wind, uh, we would probably lose some of those metal panels, so we're, we're addressing those, uh, right now, we have the contractor, uh, replacing screws on, on all of the panels on that roof. The Lamar Brumby that I got, environmental, uh, project, an addition project, uh, little rendering of the, uh, Law Act Care Center, the CMR contractor right now is currently working on the GMP, uh, reviewing all of their costs. Uh, they, we have met with them several times, uh, and they will, uh, bring us some revised numbers, uh, here, uh, probably this week, and we will sit down with them again, uh, to review the numbers and, and go over, uh, all of the different phases of the project, uh, along with the end users, uh, at the table. Ford Mac, the I D S G facility, this is a facility that, uh, we recently gave to Cabasal Architects. The facility has. The facility has been recently scanned during the holidays and currently, uh, Cabasal's office is in the middle of programming. And, uh, developing construction documents for the renovations of the facility. Uh, our intent is to, uh, replace the foundation patios that are collapsing and broken, uh, severely damaged. And also redoing the second floor, uh, outdoor balconies that also need, uh, structurally, uh, replace, uh, the woodwork. Uh, surface on, on both patios on both sides, along with some interior renovations of, uh. Uncovering some of the existing wood floors, uh, with carpet, uh, that are currently covered and we're going to be uncovering them and redoing the wood floors. Yeah, in the facility. Uh, real quick, some, uh, updates on some of these security cameras and fiber optic, uh, upgrades, uh, at, uh. At the town, uh, currently, uh, all of the data drops interior building cameras have been installed. We have fiber mercy phones that have been installed and our pending natural connections. The pending installation of, uh, five, uh, PTZ interior cameras. And pending some data drops for seven wireless mesh outdoor, uh, units. Along with that, we have, uh, the, uh, south campus audio visual upgrades, forty-five classrooms at Building C. Uh, and currently the vendor has ordered the equipment and is arriving at warehouses here locally here in Haredo. Uh. They recently conducted a walkthrough, uh, on the eleventh of this month with the vendor. And to look at all the different situations and obtained, uh, uh, the, the scheduling for the upcoming work. Uh, ten of the installation of equipment during, uh, is scheduled for, uh, for spring, uh, between March seventeenth. Or March ele- uh, thirteenth and, and seventeen. The last, uh, project on the list for IT is also the fiber optic line upgrade at Ford Mac. Thirty-three locations in the south campus, eight locations by computer solutions. Uh, and that equipment has currently been ordered, uh, in a container by the contractor has already been placed onsite. Uh, to go ahead and sort it, uh, equipment as soon as it starts coming in. That concludes, uh, an update, if anybody has any question.
Any questions, members of the committee?
Thank you.
All right, as mentioned earlier, we are going to go ahead and defer agenda item number four. Uh, we want to do a data item number five, approval of a rail coast south campus driving pad plaque, Mr. Sestavella.
Good evening, members of the board, Sestavella, Vice President of Finance and Administration for the record. Uh, this item is requesting approval by, uh, from the board, uh, for the, uh, plaque that will be located at the south campus, uh. The, uh, truck driving pad, um, as per policy, the, uh, plaque has to include the, uh, date of dedication. Uh, the board officers and members as of the date of dedication, uh, the college president as of the date of, uh, dedication. Uh, the architect firm and the contractor, contractor, uh, performing the work. Uh, as you can see on your packet, uh, you have a sample of what the plaque will be. So, uh, again, at this time, we are just gonna request that the board, uh, provide a pool at the, uh. Tomorrow's meeting, so that we can move forward and, uh, rowing the back. Any questions? Seven, seven thousand four hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Vela. Any questions from members of the committee? Move on to agenda item number six, this is your twenty twenty-two audit financial report, Mr. Sestavella.
Uh, yes, uh, good evening, uh, tonight we, uh, have Mr. Eli Mendoza, a partner with the CPA firm of Casta One-Sided and Associates. Uh, they are the CPA firm that conducts the audit for, uh, Geroito College and also the, uh, foundation. Uh, he will be going over the, uh, audit report, uh, as well as the, uh, direct management.
Thank you, Mr. Vela, uh, do you need more members, uh? Mr. Nadies President, I'm pleased to come before you this, this evening.
For the record, please identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Eli Mendoza, I'm a partner with, uh, Casta One-Sided and Associates with your auditors.
Thank you.
And, uh, again, I'm, I'm pleased to come before you to just, uh, let you know the results of the audit and to also give you some brief highlights. On the results of the audit as well. So, uh, our report, uh, please to inform you that we are rendering, uh, an unmodified report, which is a clean report. And that's included on page twelve of the annual financial report, which I believe you have, uh, provided with. And, uh, that, that, uh, report is basically the, uh, best kind of opinion that. An auditor can give you, uh, there are several different types and this is basically the standard of opinion, which basically. Indicates that the financial statements are fairly stated, which means that the reader or the, uh. Funding sources can rely on these numbers, these are reliable. And the audit that we perform is based on our auditing standards. And, uh, not only generally accepted auditing standards, but also governmental auditing standards. Since you do receive a substantial amount of federal funds, you received over forty million this year. And, uh, as part of our audit, we, we are required to look at major programs. This year we audited, uh, the, uh, our, uh, the her funds, which part of our fall, so which is about half of that amount of money. Almost the twenty million dollars of those forty billion. And, uh, and about amount, a substantial, uh, substantial amount went directly to your, uh, students. But, uh, overall, um, it's a good report. Yeah, I can also give you some highlights of the financial statements and if you wanna take a look at them. They're including on page fifteen on their management discussion and analysis. This, uh, section of the report begins on page fifteen, is put together by management and, uh. And it's a very good executive summary of what's included on the complete report, the complete reports over a hundred pa- a hundred pages. So if you wanna, uh, take a quick look at the, at the financial information. Uh, you can refer to those pages, but I do encourage you to leaf through and go through the report, it's got very good. Statistical information and other fin- supporting financial statements. Uh, Sestavella and I were looking at your net assets over the years and we've seen the, the changes over the years. And, uh, for, for the current year, your net assets stand at, uh, eighty-three point four million compared to, uh, sixty-four point nine million. Uh, of last year, so it's an increase of about eighteen and a half million dollars. The year before you had an increase also of about eighteen four, eighteen point eight million. And, uh, and just going a few years back, you were really under forty million, so you quite, uh, over the last four or five years. Your financial position has improved, that's in spite of all the, uh. Uh, requirements, you're not, that you're now required to report pension liabilities, estimated pension liabilities and posted appointment. Abilities, which in a lot of cases have caused a negative deficit net assets in a lot of governmental entities.
In, uh, reference to the fund balance, in reference to a balanced budget, what percentage, uh, is that, uh, uh, fund balance? See, uh, outside of, outside of the balanced, uh, budget, what percentage is, does that?
Uh, right now, the government, uh, finance association recommends that you funds that you budget. Yeah, for not including, and again, I'm not talking about, uh, these are like tax supported, uh, funds. That you have at least sixty days of operations. Uh, but the financial presentation that we have here includes all funds and, and, uh, because you are. Uh, reporting the model that you are using to present your financial statements is a, is similar to a business, it's a business type. Funds, but I think your financial condition is, you know, to just to give you, uh, overall, my impression of it is, you're a very stable organization. And, uh, very well managed because that's reflected on the increases in the net assets.
So we have, uh, a balanced budget, correct?
Uh, I'm not reporting on that because that's not included on the, in the financial statements, but I think Sestavella can jump in and, and let you know that.
Uh, Josh, yes, we do have a balanced budget for this, uh, this quarter. If we, we, uh, as, uh, Mr. Mendoza mentioned, uh, when we factor out. Uh, Gatsby sixty-eight and seventy-five, which are the liabilities of pension and both important, we actually have more than the sixty days. We actually have a full year worth of, uh, operations in the fund balance. It's a hundred percent of our, of our budget right now. Yes, a full year, that's correct.
But I think there's a reason for that and if you want to elaborate.
Yes, and, and again, the reason for that, again, again, when we factor out those liabilities, again, uh, again. As I had mentioned in the past, uh, if the state were to come and after those, those, uh. Payments for the pension, we would need, uh, we would be able to cover it from our fund balance. Uh, we would not need to borrow money to, uh, cover those liabilities, so again. Uh, as the Dr. Robina mentioned, the reason, reason why that fund balance exists right there and it is to cover those liabilities again.
The reason for my asking is because, uh, it does play a major, major role. When the time comes, if we were to ever float an additional bond issue, uh, that. That, uh, fund balance plays a major role as to the rating that we will get on, on our bond, whether it be. Single A, double A, or even triple A. And that's, that's, as you will know, that this has always been one area of interest and concern on my part, that's, uh. Uh, I've always, um, in manner speaking, have, uh, make sure that we monitor that, so, so we have. Uh, we will continue to have a minimum of double A rating, and of course, if we have a triple A, that's even better. Uh, but, uh, that's the reason for my question on this.
Yes, on page sixteen, you can see, uh, through your comparative information and the unrestricted net asset in. Net assets in twenty twenty were, was a deficit of eleven point six million, the unrestricted means that the funds that you have available. To use in your, in your operations and in this, in, uh, last year, that amount decreased to a deficit of one point two. This year is a positive two point two million, uh, seven thousand ninety-three dollars. So you, you, the trend, as I was mentioning, shows that you're, you're a very stable organization there and you have no deficit. Now I do a lot of audits of other governmental entities and most of them have a deficit. You know, because again, as Sestavella has indicated, because of the long-term estimated liabilities, you know, and those are estimated liabilities. Now they could change, they have, uh, improved those comparisons and as a result, those, uh, some of those liabilities have decreased. But the standards have changed where they want all entities to report those liabilities because there's a lot of governmental entities. That, uh, in the past had obligations, that basically you are, uh. Postponing, you know, the obligations or passing on the, like, the deficits or the future payments, you know, to future generations instead of. Taking care of them, so that's what the reason why the standards have changed over the years. But yes, but you are a, a very good stable, uh, financially stable organization. Uh, there's other, other detail in there, uh, as I mentioned also on page, uh, fifteen. The fiscal year that combined net position increased by about eighteen point four million dollars. Uh, the other part of the report that I would like to highlight for you is, uh, on page eighty-eight. Which I briefly refer to, the federal portion of the audit. And that also summarizes the results of the, of the audit as far as, uh. As far as the type of opinion that you are receiving, as I mentioned, you receive an unmodified, uh, report. You had no material weaknesses on over financial reporting on internal controls, no significant deficiencies. And then on federal and state awards, you had no material weaknesses on internal control, no significant deficiencies. And the, our report on the, uh, compliance with major programs is unmodified and you had no findings. Uh, that are required to be disclosed. And as I mentioned earlier, the early civilization, uh, the education civilization fund COVID nineteen is the program that we consider major. In the current year, so we basically audited, uh, half of the, of the federal files that you received. Uh, so in this page, everything is summarized for the audit and if you see all know, that's good, uh, overall. And, uh, so that concludes my highlights on the financial statements, if there's no questions. I would like to briefly refer to the report on conduct of audit, which is a separate, a separate, uh, report that we have, uh, issued. And, uh, basically that report on conduct of audit is a summary of the required communication that we as auditors are required to. Provide to you as a board or a committee, uh, as a committee also. And, uh, I'm not gonna go over everything in there, but I do wanna point out that on page, um. Beginning, uh, beginning on page three are, are recommendations, uh, that we have made in the current year. The main, uh, com- or the only comment that we have for the current year has to do with a new accounting standard. That is, uh, that is, that is being required for next year and that is, uh, a requirement basically that says that. Any software that you, where you have contracts that are not cancelable, that you are required to present. The, an asset and liability on the financial statements, so I understand there's quite a bit of those, uh, contracts that you have, so. There's gonna be some, a lot of work that's gonna entail coming up with this information, so we're recommending that. That, uh, the college, you know, gets, uh, busy working on that and preparing for that so that. It, so that there won't be any delays on the financial statements, uh, completion at the end of the year. And then we also provided on page three, beginning on page three, a status of the various, uh, comments that we had made in the prior year. So overall, you can see that there's been quite a bit of activity and action taken, uh, by the college on our recommendation, so that's, that's, uh, good. And, uh, there are any questions on those comments, I'll be happy to, to address any of those. Uh, but, uh, overall, the, the college has been very, uh, the department, the finance department has, business department has been very responsive. To our comments and our recommendation, very proactive, so, uh, that is, uh, what I'm here to report, so, any questions?
Any questions, members of the committee?
I think, I, I. Uh, I, in the past, you have, uh, recommended, uh, fraud, how, uh, fraud.
Yes.
And I don't know what the status is of that.
Would you like to elaborate on that?
Yes, uh, Ms. Vela, uh, we actually have already implemented that hotline, it's, uh, available through our website and also through, uh, one eight hundred number.
Very good, thank you.
And, uh, and we do have a, an additional recommendation that we made in the, and that's on the last page of our report. And, uh, basically we're, uh, indicating that we recommend that. You promote the assistance, you know, to pass out the word, make it more public, that people will know that there, that this, uh, exists. So that it can actually be used.
Right.
Cause you're paying a monthly fee for it, it is a very good, uh, uh. Res- I guess, uh, pre-determined measure that you have to grant fraud. And, uh, and so I think you were, you have this past year, you have implemented it and it's in place. But when we, we, uh, followed up and asked questions, you know, uh, it's just, uh. I, I kind of felt that there needs to be a little work on that area to promote that existence, to get the word out, let people know that it exists.
I agree, we can work on that.
Yes.
At least I think, you know, one of the most important things with hotlines like that is to make them know that, you know, it's. No one knows who's calling here, cause people are usually scared to call.
Yeah.
And to report that kind of stuff, so it's got to, we've got to make sure that they know it's completing our works.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you very much for.
Thank you so much, thank you for your hard work. Thank you, appreciate the the board hiring us to be your auditors, and we're here to serve you, whatever needs you have. If you we need to come before you, or if you have any questions, it's okay for you to reach out to us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sir, be careful on the road.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number seven, November twenty twenty two financial report, Mr. Sessar.
Include uh with your board packet, you receive the copy of the uh November twenty twenty two financial report. Uh we'll go quickly over the uh general operating revenue uh for as of November uh thirtieth. Uh that that revenue was uh twenty four million four hundred twelve thousand six hundred two. Uh thirty six point eight percent of our budget, budgeted revenue. Uh the only difference to note uh is on the tuition revenue. Uh at this point last year, we had waived the tuition for fall semester. So when we looked at the comparison for last year, last year's revenue is at seventeen point nine million compared to twenty four point four million this year. Uh again, uh that was uh due to us waiting tuition revenue last uh fiscal year uh in in uh. The fall semester. Uh as far as the other uh line items, uh the state appropriations are at three point seven million, uh that's thirty three point five percent. Of the amount that the state has appropriated for this fiscal year. Um the uh local taxes are eight point one million or twenty point three percent. Uh we still uh have the payments that uh are are. Transferred out to cover the contractual and taxable payments of approximately three point two pending, uh and that first payment is uh at the. End of January. Um as far as the uh other changes uh on the child development lab, uh we have revenues of seventeen thousand six hundred twenty three. Again, uh we reopen the the center. Uh so we are recording uh the the first month, uh the first two months of operations uh in on this report. Uh as far as the uh interest, uh we uh budgeted three hundred thousand for the year, we're at four hundred sixteen thousand five hundred seventy two. Again, this is due to the ad rates are increasing, our our uh returns are increasing also. Any questions on the uh revenues? For the expenses, uh expenses as of November thirtieth are fourteen point seven million. Uh that represents twenty two point twenty five percent of our budget, uh at this point last year, we were at uh twenty three percent. So again, we are in line uh based on uh our budget and compared to last fiscal year. Uh for the other uh funds, uh for the special appropriation, uh of a budget of two hundred forty four thousand seven hundred seventy three. We have uh recorded eighty one thousand eight hundred forty five, that's thirty three point four percent of our revenue. Uh expenses are at forty four thousand sixty four dollars or eighteen percent. Uh we do have a net change to the fund balance, uh at this point, it's an increase uh for the first uh three months of operations of thirty seven thousand seven hundred eighty one. Uh for auxiliary services, and these are your student services, your bookstore. Uh also includes the uh health clinic operations. Uh the revenue stands at eight hundred fifty eight thousand five hundred two, uh expenses of a hundred eighty thousand two hundred twenty six. Uh for a net change or increase uh for the first three months of operations of six hundred seventy eight thousand two hundred seventy six. Uh restricted funds, uh ten point five million in revenues and expenses. Uh again, the majority of that is coming from the Title Four Pell Grant program. Uh any questions on any of these items? For the uh facilities master plan phase three construction projects, uh we began the fiscal year with seventeen point four million. Uh we have had an interest revenue for the first three months of a hundred thirteen thousand two hundred fifteen. Uh expenditures uh of eight hundred twelve thousand five hundred ninety three. Uh that's a net uh change or a decrease uh to the uh. Facilities master plan phase three funds of six hundred ninety nine thousand two hundred seventy eight. Uh the balance as of November thirtieth stands at sixteen million seven hundred ninety nine thousand six hundred twenty two. Uh we do have some projects that are coming on board, uh we are putting the GMAX for the Lamar Bruni Rivera. As well as we're working already on updating the GMAX also for the uh. The technical services building at the south campus. Uh and and we do also have ongoing projects uh with the audio visual project uh at the south campus. Uh the uh security camera installation at the south campus also. Uh investments, uh as of October thirty first, uh we had one hundred eight million sixty seven thousand nine hundred sixty nine investments. Eighty five point seven in money market accounts. We do have a U S T bill of three point three million. Uh and investment pools of eighteen point nine million, as I mentioned, we have seen interest rates go up. Uh the money market account is currently yielding two point thirty five percent. Uh the loan start investment pool is uh early three point twenty five. The F I T investment pool, three point twenty one, and the U S T bill at three point two oh one. Uh the uh U S Treasury notes uh much have a maturity date of August thirty first, twenty twenty three. Uh and just to uh finalize the report, uh the uh general operating fund balance of the. Um as was men- mentioned as part of the uh audit. Uh for the fiscal year twenty twenty two, we ended the uh year with a positive. Uh general operating fund balance of five million forty four thousand two hundred four. Uh again, we went from uh negative two point five million in twenty one to a positive five million in twenty two. Uh we have already made the adjustment of one point eight million that is reflected as a as a fund deletion. In fiscal year twenty twenty three, and this is the twenty percent that is going to the uh deferred maintenance projects. Uh last year's uh contribution was two point four million, uh this year's contribution is one point eight. And it is based on twenty percent of the annual savings for the year. Um so right now, um we stand uh with a general operating budget under a fund balance of four point eight million. Again, this is just for the first three months of operations. Uh any questions?
Any questions, members of the committee? Thank you, Mr. Reda. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, approval of annual cyberbit cyber range licenses, Mr. Sessar.
This uh members of the board, this item is requiring the board to approve the purchase of twenty five annual licenses for the cyber. Bit uh S A A S club cloud enterprise uh from Dell Technologies in the amount of sixty thousand. Eight hundred sixty nine dollars and eighty cents. Uh the purchase is being acquired through uh D I R T S O thirty seven sixty three. Uh and this uh licenses will be used in the uh. A cybersecurity institute program, uh so that students can uh. Who are graduating from this program can have uh on hand training uh using this uh this uh system. Uh again, the uh sixty thousand eight hundred sixty nine dollars and eighty cents have been budgeted. As part of the twenty twenty three budget uh under the cybersecurity program, contracted services. Uh and uh the price for this uh twenty five licenses that I've decided to remain the same as that did to you.
Any questions, members of the committee? Yeah, all right, thank you, Mr. Reda. Move on to agenda item number nine, approval of purchase of truck driving simulator for truck driving program, Mr. Sessar.
Yes, uh members of the this item is requesting that the board approve the purchase of uh. Three uh simulators for the uh truck driving program. Uh the purchase, the total amount of the purchase will be three hundred thirty nine thousand two hundred dollars. Uh and the purchase is is being done from garage simulation. Uh the funding for these purchases is coming from the jet grant. Uh ninety five percent of the uh purchase will be covered by the grant, five percent from the college. The board approved this uh uh grant back in April twenty twenty two. Um approving the uh funding of ninety five percent coming from the jet grant and the five percent contribution. Uh from uh Laredo College. Uh the uh purchase is being made uh using search world cooperate purchasing contract number zero one one eight eight two dash. B I R. Uh again, uh the purchase is part of the jet grant from the Texas Workforce Commission.
Chair, members of the committee.
How many uh private simulators are 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 we buying?
We're purchasing three of them, Judge, uh and this will be uh the this equipment will be located at the south campus. Uh building C, we're actually modifying some of the classrooms uh to create this that space for this simulator. Questions?
Any questions, members of the committee?
No.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda number ten, approval of a one year service subscription with Dell for Apex Cloud Backup. And disaster recovery service, Mr. Albert Chavis.
Uh good evening, Chair and members of the Finance and Audit Committee, Albert Chavis, Associate Vice President of Information Technology. For this particular item, we're requesting approval to purchase a one year subscription to a uh cloud backup service from the company Dell. The name of the product is cloud uh backup and disaster recovery services. This particular system will allow us to improve our recovery point or recovery time objectives. For the backup of our data center equipment, we currently have a solution in place, but this solution has additional features. That will help us to recover in a faster method compared to the solution we currently have in place. And the this particular item uh will be purchased through a a reseller uh under a D I R contract, which is D I R T S O. Thirty seven sixty three, the name of the company is Sequel Data Systems, and the total cost is seventy eight thousand six hundred eighty six hundred eighty seven. With ninety eight cents, and this particular expense is uh was budgeted uh in the current budget.
Any questions, members of the committee? All right, thank you, Mr. Chavis.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item number eleven, approval of donor requested regular scholarship matching funds, Dr. Dan Ortiz and Ms. Sappola.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Finance and Audit Committee, President um Ramidis. L C leadership and community leaders. My name is Dr. Dan Ortiz, the Vice President of Institutional Advancement. And the agenda item that I'm making a request on is the approval for donor regular scholarship matching funds. Currently, we have uh funds that have been established by the donor and um alumni relations department. The donors have, the donations have already been secured, and the donors are requesting a dollar for dollar match. There are three different um scholarship organizations that are seeking this. The Patsy Gonzalez upward bound scholarship for ten thousand dollars. The donors are Patricia Gonzalez and Carlos Carza. The next one is Miss Estela G. Perez Scholarship for ten thousand dollars, the donors Miss Estela Perez and Rolando Dan Ortiz. And then the last one, the Presidential Scholarship for two thousand dollars, the donor, the Lula Council number seven, H. Gonzalez. So the total regular scholarship matching request is twenty two thousand dollars. The matching funds will be made available through the scholarship match account, fund twenty eight, zero eight, zero nine. Pending the budget transfer request, so that's the first item.
Any uh comments uh or questions, members of the committee? Uh just wanna mention, on behalf of the committee, thank you and Mr. Ortiz for your generous donation.
And her mom.
And it's and 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 my mom.
All right, uh moving to agenda number twelve, ratification of donor requested endowment matching funds. Uh Dr. Dan Ortiz.
Okay, the second one, we're just really excited about, we're excited about all of them, the 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 donor relations team, of course. Um Dr. Ramidis, the board, there's a lot of excitement about what's happening at Laredo College. And there's been a lot of moving um. Moving requests on on the community just giving back to us. So what I'm seeking is approval for um the endowment matching fund. The funds have been established by the donor alumni relation department, the endowment funds have been secured. I picked them up last week, donors are requesting a dollar for dollar match. It's for the Carol East Summers Junior, Mr. South Texas, L C Nursing Endowment of fifty thousand dollars. The donors are Mr. and Mrs. Um no, Mr. Robert Summers and Shelley Summers. They're the um son and daughter. The total endowment matching request is fifty thousand dollars. The matching funds will be made available through the TikTok Restricted Scholarship Account, Fund twenty six, eighty, seventy seven dash. Fifty five, zero, zero, one, um and it goes on, a non-general operating fund pending the budget transfer. Are there any?
Mr. Chair.
Chair recognizes President Dr. Ortiz.
Yes, uh Dr. Ortiz, there have been additional uh donations given from the event. Um to this particular scholarship fund that we're not matching, do you mind giving us an update on that, please?
Not at all. So we had uh approximately about sixteen. Well, there's there's seventy four thousand dollars that have been received, and we're pending six because we had to send two back. Uh to San Antonio and to the valleys, making a total of eighty thousand dollars additional. Based on the event, having cards available, and the Summers graciously asking the people that attended the event to give back. And I think this is gonna be great for the nursing program. Um Mr. Summers said some very nice things the day of the event. And he talked about how he felt like nurse, whether they were vocational nurses. Whether they were C N A, they were medical assistants, all the way up to nurse practitioners. And and physician assistants that have been working on them while he was in his last days. Um he continued to ask and would ask if they, many of them had come from Laredo College. So it's a place that's very, very deep, uh it's steep seated seated in the family. And I know that um this did not, I mean, there was a relationship that had already been. Um established at the college for many years, but much of this um excitement comes from. Dr. Ramidis and her friendship with the community, and we just uh thank the community. The nursing team and to continue to just produce just some great opportunities for our students. And the programs.
And we're definitely grateful for for the Summers family for their generous donation, and also the most important, Dr. Abida, is for your leadership and your role. Uh and it's in the idea of of uh the additional funds uh that were that were acquired that night. Why are we mashing the other thirty thousand?
The other eighty thousand.
Eighty, eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand.
Seventy four, even received, and we're pending six thousand that were thinking that had to go back.
So the hundred thousand will now become a hundred and eighty thousand, well, the agreement we had originally made was that we would all match. The family's contribution, and so that's why, so.
And for the record, the the names are is Robert Summers and Shelley Summers.
Their brother and sister.
We're definitely eternally grateful for their generous contributions. And of course, for for that wonderful event, it was a beautiful event for for Mr. Summers.
And for our students that were in attendance, that we asked to be there, it it was a very, very enlightening. Opportunity for them, they were they were extremely grateful to be there and be a part of of that historic event, and so they were. They were very excited, the students and and the faculty that were with us that day too, so. I wanna thank them because they were technically still all on holiday, um and they all did show up, and so um. Dr. Martinez, who who was there um and and took the students and and Dr. Humphries, and they were all just super excited to be there. And certainly, the recognition that our students deserve for the work that they're now doing as professionals out in the field. And they were all just super excited to be there, and certainly the recognition that our students deserve for the work that they're now doing as professionals out in the field.
The response of the community and the turnout was impressive.
Yes, sir, it was. Well, and, and, and Mr. Summers did tell me before his passing that. Everyone that he came in contact with at the hospital or at the clinics, he would ask them, where did you get your degree, or where did you go to school? And the students would all very proudly say Laredo College. And he was so impressed by that, that. Um, he just felt compelled to do something more, and these were his dying wishes for his children, and then they acquiesced. And for, you know, to Robert and Shelley for their kindness and generosity and wanting to fulfill their death dreams. And so. Um, his other dream was for us to move the facility, the, the statues from PNC Bank here, and so we're still working on that. And so that'll happen eventually.
And I will tell you that the donor team continues to get um, just some donations that are coming in often, so. It's exciting.
Definitely exciting. And wonderful for our students and our board. So, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Ortiz. All right, we'll move on to agenda item thirteen. Um, it is six forty, and we are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all very much.
You're welcome very much.